He's our contract attorney.
Oh, okay.
He's retired.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I know, I figured they're just gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, we're gonna call the regular meeting to order. Is my, uh, is my microphone on?
Yes.
All right, very good, we're gonna call the regular meeting to order, we're gonna ask all to stand and do a silent invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. And now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you all for being here this evening. Uh, we are now going to move on to, uh... Where are we at here, sorry? Presentations, my apologies here. Presentations, we have the Youth Action Council presentation. We'll have them come forward and do their presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, City Council members, city managers, city attorney, and all our community members. Thank you all for being here today, and we are so excited to be back presenting to you all. So before we get started, we'd like to introduce ourselves. So hi, my name is DJ, I'm currently a junior at GECA, this is my third year in Yak, and I currently serve as president.
Hi, my name is Kamani, I'm a freshman at Sabrato, this is my first year in Yak, and I'm an active member.
Hi, my name is Akash Shakhia, I am a junior at Oakwood School, uh, this is my first year on Yak, and I'm an active member.
And today, we are presenting developmental asset number forty-one, and that is young person who feels comfortable with and is proud of their cultural identity.
A real, a real-life topic that connects with this month's developmental asset is imposter syndrome. Imposter syndrome can be described as the feeling of inadequacy or insecurity that stems from the lack of ability or qualification of a person. Often, people feel imposter syndrome even though they are qualified for the position they are in or the situation they are experiencing. This relates to the developmental asset because it directly influences youth feeling proud and confident about their identity. This is mainly because, in order for youth to feel good about themselves and their identity, they need to look back on themselves and reflect to understand the importance of their culture and identity. Imposter syndrome does the opposite of this by making youth self-conscious and nervous. It makes them feel less or not as important. The way I relate and connect to this month's developmental asset is through my culture and how I cherish it. I like to stay connected to my family members even though they are long-distance. I like to maintain a positive self-image, I do this by realizing things I do good in and not comparing myself to others. I stay connected to my culture and identity by asking family members how I can participate in and do things that help me connect to my culture.
Thank you so much, Kamani, for sharing about imposter syndrome and also how you, you know, experience your culture through your identity. So, um, for me, I'm South Asian, and I...culture has always been a special part of my life. It kinda reminds me of when a little kid gets a new toy and they carry it with them wherever they go because it's something that they treasure, and that's what my culture feels like to me. So, I've participated in lots of cultural traditions in my home, especially through food. I still remember when I was about four or five years old, rolling up these little dough balls to give, um, to my mom to make puri, and ever since then, I've helped make lots of dishes such as paneer, butter chicken, and rasam, and each dish has its own meaning and its own memory behind it. For me, it's not just about cooking, it's about preserving my culture and sharing love. However, sometimes it can be really difficult coping with distance because my grandparents, they live really far away, and they live all the way in India, so I rarely get to visit them, but I still try and communicate with them through WhatsApp or FaceTime and hear about their traditions and their stories. And for me, it's like not about my own culture, but about experiencing other people's cultures, and I've had that experience to do so. Just this past summer, I was able to go to a family friend's house and celebrate Shabbat, and also, um, try like Filipino food with a friend, and these experiences have shown me the importance of being in such a diverse world and how grateful I am to be here today.
Thank you, DJ, for sharing how this developmental asset for the month reflects on you and how, and how you, um, deal with the long distance between you and your family. Um, for me, uh, the way I rep, I, uh, I, um, relate to this month's developmental asset is through cultural connection and family values. Um, for me, uh, in my religion, I'm personally Nepalese, and there are many religious festivals that happen, um, throughout the year, and each of these festivals are actually will correlate to a family value that we hold very deep inside, and I feel that that truly represents the developmental asset for this month because of just how you need to be able to, um, use your religion and how you need to be able to, um, connect it, and yeah. So, the second bullet point is balancing dual identities. So, being in America while being Nepalese is kind of tough because there aren't exactly many other Nepalese, um, that are around my age that I can, um, interact with, so but knowing that there are resources to help me feel like I still belong, uh, definitely does make a difference. Um, for pride and resilience and heritage, um, I feel personally that it is important to know that we are all unique in our own way, and that it is important to be prideful and resilient when it comes to representing our culture. So, for the quote for this month, we chose collectively is "Your culture is your most valuable asset, guard it with your life." This was a quote by Brian Chesky, co-founder of Airbnb. Um, and we chose this quote to be the representative quote for this month because we feel that if you aren't able to defend your culture, you simply won't be able to represent your true and best self, and that's all what we're all trying to do here.
Thank you all for the opportunity to show this month's developmental asset and how we relate to it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, DJ, Kamani, and Akash, thank you so much, I appreciate it, great presentation. I think we do now... You. We are now going to do a presentation, uh, honoring Mike Cox, and so I'd like to...who's gonna be the one to...
Me first, yes. Thank you. Yes, please, thank you. My name is Kylie Roll, and I am the co, one of the co-vice presidents in Yak, the Youth Action Council. I'm here with Joseph, another co-vice president, and DJ, our lovely president, and we are here to give a recognition for Mike Cox, one of our strongest supporters for seventeen years. The Morgan Hill Youth Action Council is proud to express its heartfelt appreciation to Mike Cox, former owner of Anarobi Systems, for his steadfast support of our programs over the past seventeen years.
His generation, generous contributions have been invaluable and a significant influence. Mike has deeply affected the lives of more than three hundred and fifty teens with his unwavering dedication and inspiration.
His kindness, commitment, and advocacy for the youth in our community have forged a lasting legacy that will undoubtedly continue to inspire future generations to come. He rocks!
Mike will be always in our hearts.
And we have Mike's family here coming on up. Yeah.
Thank you so much, this is absolutely wonderful. I would like to say a few words if that's okay. A tremendous recognition.
First of all, thank you to the Youth Action Council, you are awesome. I've known that you were awesome for many years because in those seventeen years, sometimes you all would come to our house for the graduation, along with former mayor Steve Tate, who would give out all the graduation certificates, and Mike would have a little science project for you, and a lot of food, there was always cooking. Um, I brought two things with me tonight. One is the book that the Youth Action Council, uh, gave to Mike about, I don't know, five or six years ago, and I keep it in my kitchen. The photos are phenomenal. I wish I could show you all, but here's one of the photos, a group of class, it's a class, and then there's another one with, yeah, the paella, paella. You never knew what we were going to eat, you know, the day before, Mike would get some ingredients and say, "Oh, let's make a paella," and it was huge, and it was just wonderfully put together, and everybody had a great time, and there was always a science experiment. So, I really appreciate this remembrance, it's a great picture of Mike, that's gonna be another special remembrance, I really appreciate that. The second thing that I brought with me this, uh, this evening was, Mike did always support Yak, and he did it in both, you know, what he was doing with Yak personally, but also monetarily, so I would like to present this, thank you, not the book, the book's mine, but I'd like to present this donation to Yak, and hopefully we can continue that, it's from our family, from the Cox family, our son Steve, my son Steve down there, my grandchildren, Connor Cox and Chloe Cox, and so we hope to support Yak for many years to come as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you also very much. Okay, with that, uh, and a great, great presentation, great recognition, thank you all. Uh, we're now going to our city council reports, and this is a three-minute report by council member Vega, and we'll start with, uh, council member, go right ahead.
Okay, I'll try not to use all three minutes. Okay, so, um, not much has happened since the last time we met, but last Monday, we did do our city council facilitated session, and I learned a lot of things, I learned how important it is that we have diversity, and that always fitting in is not something that we need to do, and that especially for council, being different and having different ideas and different backgrounds plays a huge role on how we represent our community, so I got that out of that, and I really appreciate all the hard work staff put into making sure that we had this, uh, meeting, so thank you, and that's what I did this week.
Very good, thank you. Now we'll do other reports, these are limited to one minute, is there anybody, anybody else wanting to report, council member Martinez-Beltrane?
Thank you, I want to commend our community members, businesses, and organizations who stepped up, um, during the shutdown to help meet the needs of families and individuals whose lives and livelihoods were disrupted by that, I was really proud of our Morgan Hill community, thank you. I also went to the new council's, um, financial executive board meeting, I chaired the VTA PAC board meeting, and had a couple of legislative community updates, and then finally on Sunday, I was awarded the civic engagement award at the Silicon Valley Latina Coalition at their twenty-sixth, seventh anniversary and their fifteenth-year annual brunch.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you for that, any other reports? Council member Lebers?
Yes, um, last Friday night, um, Mayor Turner was, uh, not available, so I got to be, give an opening speech at philanthropy night, which is part of Community Foundation, and they gave out twenty-one awards to organizations and people that have done good in the community, so that was very touching, really. Um, I not only gave an opening speech, I also was able to hand out the awards, so it was a fun evening, and, um, I thank the Community Foundation for all they do, uh, to startups that are having a hard time getting their own nonprofit status, they can fall under Community Foundation, get on their feet, and at some point, go out on their own if they want to, so it's a great organization. I had a very good time, and I'm sure everybody else that was there had a very good time, so thank you.
Thank you. Council member Ewan Aga, nothing? Okay, nothing from you as well? Uh, so we will move on to our city manager's report, Christina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, my teammates that are here. What we just heard with the Cox dedication just really is just such a great indication of just how amazing our community is and how all the pieces are sort of interwoven. Marilyn mentioned the philanthropy night dinner, Steve Cox is on that board, and he presented, and just how, I mean, the generous donation and how they care so much about our community, and they're a business in our community, a for-profit business, yet they're just giving really amazing ways, so just a nice reminder of how special Morgan Hill is. So with that, um, some exciting new technology, uh, the city clerk, Michelle Bigelow, and others have worked on getting translation tools, so specifically Pocket Talk's Sentio Translation Tool, a significant step forward in making our meetings more welcoming and accessible for our entire community. It delivers real-time, two-way, AI-powered translation in more than eighty languages, either as text or audio directly to a participant's smartphone, tablet, or laptop. It works instantly through a simple QR code with no app download required and functions both in-person and on Zoom. For everyone without a device, we have tablets and single-use headphones available, and will also display the translated text on one of the room's projectors, allowing everyone to follow along comfortably. This rollout is a key action item from the city's Communications Outreach and Engagement Work Plan, which commits us to improving language access and ensuring that every resident can participate meaningfully in local government. It helps us move that promise from paper to practice. It strengthens transparency, breaks down language barriers, and allows more voices to participate in the civic conversation, and then the last thing that I would add is it's very, very budget-friendly, so Michelle, through her due diligence, um, found a solution that, um, really was not very costly. With that, um, the second item I have is, um, one of the areas that council members have been hearing from is the Ginger and Taylor area, uh, wanted to announce that the city removed no parking signs along the drone to provide parking relief to the neighborhood. Um, next, I wanted to just share that the city and Visit Morgan Hill participated in yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting for the county, and provided comments regarding zoning regulations that affect agricultural land in South County, and the outcome is the county is pausing the zoning changes and will reevaluate after additional outreach is completed. Today, I attended the South County Youth Task Force meeting along with councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Lebers. Um, a lot of the discussion was focused on e-bikes and the approach to the e-bikes, um, that have just led to significant and horrific accidents and what our approach is, and then just a discussion of the work plan, and really the vision for the task force, task force is to prevent youth violence. And then ending on an economic development note, as you probably have seen, Raising Canes is now open, serving their chicken fingers, and Phil's Coffee is opening very soon, and if you've driven by, the signs have gone up. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Christina, we're now gonna look to the city attorney's report with this assistant city attorney, Dorothy Ma.
Deputy city attorney.
Deputy, okay, we didn't, you just got a promotion, but if you don't want it, I'm sorry, deputy city attorney, Dorothy Ma.
Um, just, uh, city, uh, city council met in closed session prior to the regular meeting, and there was no reportable action.
Very good.
That's all.
Thank you, Dorothy, appreciate that. Hey, before we get into public comment, I did want to recognize we have a group of students here, uh, we're glad that you're here, uh, I think you probably are, uh, you have to commit to an hour, is that correct? So we'll make sure at around seven, we might take a brief break in order for you to, if you want to move on, if you want to stay the rest of the night, you're welcome to be with us here till midnight, uh, which we won't, we don't, we don't expect to be here that long, but, uh, glad that you're here and welcome, thank you. Uh, did now for public comments, uh, is, do we have any public comments, uh, okay?
Our first speakers, Krista Rupp and Gabby Crissini. And that mic should be hot for you.
I'm assuming, just real quickly, that one person at a time, three minutes each, is that what we're talking, are you coming up as a team?
We are sharing.
You're sharing three minutes?
Yes, we are co-commenting.
Okay, all right, very good. I just wanna make sure it's three minutes.
Otherwise, it's single file.
It's, yeah.
I think it'll be under three minutes.
Okay, okay, very, very good, I just, yeah. No, 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 just, I, you know, I don't, if I cut you off, I don't want you going, "Hey." Okay, please, go right ahead.
All right, well, good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, and community, I'm Krista Rupp, the executive director of Visit Morgan Hill.
And I'm Gabby Crissini, from the downtown Morgan Hill Improvement District. We are honored to be here tonight to introduce to you Mary Morgan Hill. It's a shared vision to bring the holiday season to life in downtown Morgan Hill like you have never seen before. Following the success of our twinkle lights, which the downtown Morgan Hill Improvement District installed last year, we thought that this was the perfect opportunity to introduce the holiday season to you. Instigated by Mayor Mark Turner, a holiday destination task force was formed. We've been working together since January of 2025, literally, Talking Christmas for almost a year, and we're thrilled to finally announce Mary Morgan Hill, a celebration filled with community events and local promotion this December.
This is a collaborative effort made possible by a number of dedicated partners that are leveraging existing and new holiday events. The festivities kick off on December fifth with the Chambers Merry Market Holiday Bazaar at the Community and Cultural Center, followed by our beloved Kiwanis Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting on December sixth. There's a brand-new free movie night, um, featuring How the Grinch Stole Christmas immediately following the parade.
And on December thirteenth, don't miss the holiday edition of Sidewalk Saturdays, called the Jingle Market on Third this year, an open-air market where families can shop, visit Santa and the Grinch, and enjoy free holiday-themed activities. On December the eighteenth, the downtown Morgan Hill Improvement District and Lial Hospitality will be hosting the Mary Morgan Hill Last Stop Christmas Shop Market at the Granada, featuring over forty vendors, photos with Santa... with Santa, kids' activities, and more. Each of these community events are free for anyone to attend.
Also part of Mary Morgan Hill are dozens of local restaurant, winery, and retail specials and events. Think holiday food and drink, themed dinners, live musical performances, sip and shops, art classes, holiday boutiques, and more. The Buy Local Holiday Shopping Passport is up and running, and the Morgan Hill Downtown Association is sponsoring its annual storefront decorating contest. So Mary Morgan Hill is a great time to come out and support your favorite local businesses, try some new ones, and enjoy the charming community events with your friends and neighbors. Everything you need to know can be found at marymorganhill.org.
And just a real quick special thank you to our sponsors who made this possible, Edward Boss Prado Foundation, Land and Home Financial, the Downtown Association, and Carolyn Burkhart.
Your three minutes are up.
We did.
Thank you, you did well. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Wow, that was a lot.
Our next speaker is Sean Mulligan.
Hi, I'm Sean Mulligan from Holiday Lake Estates. I'm on the board of our homeowners association and serve on the Firewise Board for Holiday Lake Estates in the Lake Anderson area. As some of you may be aware, our association filed a petition in Superior Court regarding the Anderson Dam Seismic Retrofit Project and Wildfire impacts from the August 2020 evacuation of 1,134 homes and 3,456 residents. I emailed a copy of that petition to both of the Turners and our council representative Marilyn Lebers. We've been in discussions to resolve this matter, and if the discussions result in a settlement, funding may become available for two critical emergency communication systems for Morgan Hill. The first are NOAA Weather radios, like this one right here, and AM radio infrastructure. I'm here to brief the council on these systems so you're prepared if this funding opportunity arises and requires your formal acceptance. NOAA Weather radios are battery-powered devices that receive emergency alerts when cell phone towers and power are down. Marin County and Santa Rosa distribute them to their residents. Santa Rosa provided 12,000 of these Midland NOAA Weather radios. Nationwide, over 100 million have been deployed. Jennifer Ponce at the Office of Emergency Services already agreed to send emergency messages to NOAA Weather radios for our area. There is zero ongoing cost to the city, and these are individual devices that members maintain for themselves, like smoke detectors. And the second is the AM radio infrastructure. Currently, 67% of Santa Clara County residents, over 1.3 million people, live in cities with emergency radio stations. These are Gilroy, San Jose, Saratoga, Cupertino, Sunnyvale, and La Sata Hills. Morgan Hill has an existing FCC license but stopped broadcasting in 2004. A 10-watt AM transmitter atop the police station would reach approximately 57,000 people in its five-mile radius, including travelers on Highway 101 and residents in unincorporated high-risk areas throughout Morgan Hill. Cities like Cupertino and Sunnyvale use their AM stations to activate CERT teams and for general civic communications. Morgan Hill could do the same. Annual maintenance is estimated at $5,000 to $1,500 per year, less than 0.01% of typical emergency services budgets. Cupertino, Sunnyvale, Irvine operate identical systems as routine infrastructure. We recognize AM radio infrastructure requires public education. Our homeowners associations and Firewise Boards are committed to leading that effort in coordination with the city, ensuring residents in high-risk areas have portable AM radios and know how to tune in during emergencies. If our discussions result in a settlement, funding may come available, and the council would need to formally vote to accept it. This will give our city significant emergency preparedness upgrades at NOAA cost to the general fund. We're here to help you be better prepared to accept this funding if it becomes available. If you do not, the resources would have to be directed. However, we believe city-operated systems would be most effective in giving Morgan Hill local control over emergency communications. My colleague, Nick Garnett, a firefighter, community wildfire mitigation specialist, public information officer, and cert instructor for the city, will explain why these systems are operationally critical. You can find detailed information at mhwildfire.org.
Sean, your time is up.
We're available to answer questions and hope the council will give this serious consideration if the opportunity arises. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Nick Garnett?
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council, staff, and folks who are here. My name is Nick Garnett. I live in a very high-fire danger area up in Holiday Lake Estates. I am a firefighter with the Fire Department in Topeka County, and as Sean said, I'm also a community wildfire mitigation specialist. I am a public information officer and an instructor for Morgan Hill's CERT program, as well as CERT programs for San Jose and other cities around here. And I'm also part of one of the federal national incident management teams that manage the biggest, the most challenging incidents across the country. And one of the things we know, and my friends back there in uniform, I'm sure, would affirm, communication is absolutely essential in any kind of emergency and disaster. When communications works well, things go well. When communications don't go well, terrible things happen. People die, events spin out of control. And almost every big incident where there's loss of life or other terrible events, there's usually some sort of communication failure associated with that. We've learned that the hard way. So the quality of our communications infrastructure really determines the quality of our response. You can have the very best-trained firefighters and equipment, but if you can't communicate with the public and coordinate responders, none of it ends up mattering, because in every major wildfire, the cellphone towers go down, they lose power, PG&E shuts off the power, and our primary ways of communicating with the public are gone. So in areas of Morgan Hill, fire could spread through neighborhoods in three or four hours, but evacuation can take eight and a half hours. If people can't get the evacuation orders or route updates, they may wait too long, they may take the wrong road, and communication gaps directly result in greater loss of life. At the Camp Fire up in Paradise, evacuating residents clogged the roads so badly that CalFire had to use bulldozers to plow their way through so that fire equipment could get into the city. So faster, more coordinated evacuations mean that firefighters can get to the fire faster, stop its spread instead of being stuck in traffic or rescuing trapped residents. So these NOAA Weather radios are really the gold standard. They work independently of cellphone networks and power grids, because they're battery-powered. And then AM radio provides continuous updates during a prolonged evacuation, which roads are open, where to go, what's happening, and it can reach people without relying on the cell phones we take for granted these days. So if Morgan Hill had an AM radio station, that could also be used to activate CERT, and this 10-watt AM transmitter that this funding may become available for, simpler technology than the average traffic signal out there, and annual maintenance costs $500 to $1,500. You don't want to scramble to put together emergency communications to the last minute. You want to plan ahead of time. So if this funding becomes available, I want to strongly encourage the council to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Ron Kirkish.
I say Sean did a fine job displaying those, your Vanuah there for a few seconds.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city administrator, and city attorney. I love to eat. Food is probably the major thing that I live for. And when I saw that picture of that buttered chicken, I'll tell you, Mayor, that, I almost salived.
Salived.
Okay. So my request, Mayor, and city administrator, is if there's any way you can get the recipe from that darling girl, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. We will, we'll put our best on that one.
I have no other public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Okay, then we will close the public comment. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? I've got a motion to adopt. I've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That being known, that passes unanimously. And now for the consent calendar. If anyone's, is anyone looking to take any items off the consent calendar? Councilmember Martinez-Beltrane?
I'd just like a report, public report on seven.
Sure, sure. Item seven. Just a report on that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not going to pull that item. Do we want to do the report first and then approve, or?
I do want to pull it.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry, forgive me. Okay, then we're going to prove, we'll pull item seven. Anybody else looking to pull an item, whether on the council or in the public?
I have another question on eight. I don't know if that's to pull it or just a question.
I will look to the, the brain trust over here.
I would suggest that it just be pulled in case the question leads to further discussion.
Very good. We'll pull items seven and eight. That being the case, if there were no other items to be pulled, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items seven and eight.
So moved.
I have a motion by Lebers.
Second.
Second by Vega. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none. That passes. Okay, so item seven, who will give us a report on that? Christina?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven is a recommendation to adopt Morgan Hill's approach to public service. And so, as mentioned, this evening, we, on November the 10th, there was a special city council meeting, and it was a facility-
I'm sorry, I, I was trying to pull the, that's not the right number.
Oh.
I keep getting my numbers. I think we need to meet with you, Michelle.
Which one are you looking for?
Well, now I've got to get back to it. It's, uh-
Topic?
It's the, it's-
We've got a few ordinance adoptions. We have minutes.
Yes.
Weed abatement.
Hold on, let me look it up.
And madiact.
Do you, are you okay, councilmember, if we go to eight?
Yes, let's go to eight.
And we'll come back and, and deal with that. Okay, so item eight.
Right, this is regarding Manzanita Park. I think, I'm assuming I got the right number on that one.
Yes.
So I just was curious, because it says there's still a delay in the UPRR permitting process. Can you just give a little bit more of a background and detail on that? What is the delay?
Yes, absolutely. And I believe we have Chris, oh, thank you. Maria's coming forward.
You come up here.
I think it's because it's, um- Maria Anhales is coming forward, senior civil engineer, to talk about UPRR and the delay.
Is that on?
Hello?
There you go. Yeah.
So the process, there's a longer process when submitting an application to the Union Pacific Railroad when there is work in the railroad property or right of way. So it isn't a delay with the application. It's more, there is like a diagnostic, it started with a diagnostic meeting, I think, two years ago, 2023, and then it had to go through several iterations of review within the Union Pacific Railroad staff and also the CPUC, a Public Utilities Commission. And so we are now at a point where they're good with the plans as it is, but it has to go through another, an actual application with the plans. And so we haven't had the actual application sent in. So we're waiting for the, an application to be sent with an agreement with Union Pacific, but they have to work with the Public Utilities Commission. And so it's not, it's, it's a longer, like, wait to actually get priority. So that's what's taking so long. So we've been engaged, though, with the person at Union Pacific. They have a consultant that actually processes and corresponds with us. Yes.
Sorry, I'm just, so Union Pacific, it's across the street from this project, yes?
Yes.
I didn't realize that they had such an influence from something that's happening on what is now a private residence, right?
Yes, it's the traffic signal modification. Yes.
Oh, Union Pacific. Okay. Thank you. I really just wanted clarification, like, why is the delay? But that makes more sense. It's really, it's not so much that the application was turned in and it's been done wrong or was denied. It wasn't anything on our part.
There's just, yeah, I mean, they, I think there's a regional territory that this, the staff that we're working on, so it's, I don't know how far, maybe till, maybe through San Francisco. So it's, they have, I guess, more applications that come in and not just one jurisdiction.
Okay, and this doesn't affect us in any way as a city financially, this whole delay?
The, it's the developer is, it's actually paying for all the costs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Martinez-Beltrane, this is the item.
This was the item.
Yep, go right ahead.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So I wanted to just understand, so it's an 18-month extension to do that public improvement, but how are we impacted by that? Because that's a signal, right? So what is, what is the mitigation in that, in the time?
How we're, well, how we're impacted is really the, the fourth leg of that intersection is, is the project side, and so we don't have that signal, I guess, done, portioned done, but it also obviously affects the developer, because we're going to hold some of their buildings, paused, not a good word, but it'll delay them, it'll delay them. And it's really obviously not their fault, but they're going through this process of getting the permit.
Okay, so, and that was, that was my question, is that some of the volume will be held off because the light is not going to be functioning?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions on the council? We'll open up for public comment on this item. Do you have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
There being none, we'll close the public comment on this item and entertain a motion to approve item eight. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none? Very good. Since we did pull item seven, and if there were no other comments on item seven, I will open it for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
There being none, we'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve item seven. Got a motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, that passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you all. Now for public hearings, item 11. Christina, we'll turn it to you.
Yes, good evening. Our building official, Eric Blomquist, is coming forward to host the public hearing tonight for an item that you previously heard in the month of October.
So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, teammates, public. This item was introduced on October 15th, city council meeting, which, during which I did a presentation summarizing the proposed amendment. That presentation was included in part of my staff report for this meeting. In the interest of time, I will not repeat that presentation. Staff recommends proceeding with the next steps, which would include opening, closing the public hearing, waiving the second reading, and adopting the ordinance. I'm available for questions.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. Any questions by council on this item?
I'll just ask Eric if you can explain for a bit. Was there any updates or changes that you included?
There were no updates or changes included in the proposed ordinance.
Okay. I'll go ahead and, I'll-
Go ahead, public comment. If there's no other questions by council, we'll open this for a public comment. Do you have any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
There being none, we'll close the public comment, and if there was no further discussion?
I'll move to waive the second reading of the ordinance.
Very good. I have a motion to, well, we'll go number one, open and close public hearing. You need a motion for that item?
Move to approve, or move to open and close?
I've got a motion to, I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Councilmember Vega. All in favor?
And I'll move now the number two.
Wait, we got a, all in favor, say?
Aye.
Oh, aye. There we go. And then I'll take a, a motion for item two. I'm sorry, item 11.2. So moved, I need a second?
Second.
We've got a second. With that, Michelle, would you please read the title and call the roll?
An ordinance of the city of Morgan Hill amending chapters 15.08 Building Code, 15.12 Electrical Code, 15.16 Mechanical Code, 15.20 Plumbing Code, 15.44 Fire Code, and to adopt by reference the 2025 California State Building Standards Codes known, codes known as designated, known and designated as California Code of Regulations Title 24. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmembers Vega?
Aye.
Lebers?
Aye.
Iwanaga?
Aye.
Martinez-Beltrane?
Aye.
Very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Now to item 12. Christina?
Housing and Economic Mobility Director John Lang is coming forward for our TEFRA hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and community of Morgan Hill, John Lang, Housing and Economic Mobility Director. I have a few brief remarks on this item. Tonight this evening, we are looking to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve a proposed financing. Gemcore Development LLC had asked the California Municipal Finance Authority to be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in the amount not to exceed $85 million for tax revenue bonds to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located at 18730 Minor Lane in Morgan Hill. This bond issuance actually occurred June 2nd, 2022, and the project, more formally known as the Village of Madrone, completed construction in 2024. This particular project is seeking a modification to their permanent loan. In essence, they're refinancing their loan. As a result, this triggers the reissuance of bonds, which also requires another TEFRA hearing. So just as a quick reminder, the California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments and nonprofits, as well as businesses, with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt bonding. The debt issued by the CMFA is the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city is, has no financial obligation or legal obligation associated with the repayment of the debt. All the financing documents carry dis, carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city, and the city bears no cost in the refinancing of this debt. So this is really a private loan with a borrower and their bank. Therefore, it is recommended that city council adopt the resolution. Such adoption is solely the purpose of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. That completes my remarks. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions on the council? Councilmember Martinez-Beltran?
Thanks, I just wanted to understand why. It says here that they're going to do different acquisition improvements. Do we have, do we know what that's going to be?
This is, the original loan was for the construction, so the original bond issuance of $85 million was for the construction of that project.
In 2022.
And it has been constructed. What they're basically redoing, think of it in terms of your home, they're just refinancing their home. So the bondage, bondage, which doesn't change.
None of this is, this was just the terms for the original.
Correct, and so this, because they're increasing their permanent loan, they're not increasing the bond, they're changing their permanent loan structure, the law requires them to conduct the TEFRA hearing, and that is why we're here.
So we can assume that whatever $85 million that they bought then is going to be applied as it was in 2022?
Yeah, there's no change to the bond, it's just a restructuring of the loan. So if you think about refinancing your home, whatever you owe on it is still what you owe. You might be getting a lower interest rate, or you might be modifying the length, but what you owe is what you owe.
Right, unless you're refinancing and getting a second as well, then you might have some other hunches. I'm not really sure. Thanks.
Yes.
Very good, any other questions?
So, just, sorry, so usually when you refinance, I mean, some people tend to use some of that money to maybe fix up their house. Are they thinking about adding any nice things, like parking or a park or something for that neighborhood?
It, this, this is really a change to the permanent loan. So what typically happens in housing projects, you get a construction loan, and those construction loans are generally much shorter in term than your traditional home, like a 30-year loan. When you build a project, your loan terms typically are three years, maybe five years. So what typically happens is once it's construct, once it's constructed, you want to get rid of that loan and change the loan structure, and that's what's happening here.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. There are no other questions on the council? We'll open it for public comment. Do you have any comments on this item?
No, mayor.
There being none, we'll close the public comment, and if there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to approve item 12.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve, second by councilmember Vega. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, that passes unanimously, thank you so much. And now for other business, item 13, for the 2026 city council meeting schedule. Christina?
Yes, city clerk, Michelle Bigelow, will provide the report.
Good evening, mayor, council, teammates, community that's here with us this evening. Each year, the city council brings forward its upcoming year's schedule. So in your packet is the 2026 city council meeting schedule. It does go into 2027 a little bit, so there's assistance with future planning. We do have a supplement on this item, so we're asking that if you approve it, it would be the supplemental schedule. The policy which directs how we set the schedule is also attached for your review, and that concludes my report.
Very good. Any questions on this item? Councilmember Martinez-Beltran?
Yeah, thank you. I was looking at this and on two, four, I just would, would like for us to maybe hold that rather than canceling it. We don't, we don't know that we won't have anything just yet. I know that we are having our goal setting on Friday, but I really do want to see that we're using that for workshop time, especially with our mayor council, making sure that we're getting a chance to hear and understand different topics. So I just didn't, wanted to see if we could, I see it's on the 4th. We have that scheduled to be canceled, and then again, on the 22nd, oh, sorry, not the 22nd, because that will be, we won't be here, but it's, the other one, I think, is on February 3rd, you know, 7. So just asking that we keep those open. We did talk at our last meeting about having a number of workshops, and I think these are good opportunities for us to do that. I have so noted on the 26th of August, 2026, that we have our workshop as a regular council meeting. And again, just wanting to give some levity to that and have that be, you know, more framed as a, as a workshop rather than a meeting. Those are my, those are the questions that I have, if we can look at that.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we want to, do you want to address that now, or do you want to ask questions before we come back?
Yeah, just to, to add a little bit more. So councilwoman Martinez-Beltran is referring to, so it's, if you go to the supplement one, so it's the updated meeting schedule. We start off with the cancellation on January the 7th, per our policy, and then the 21st for the mayor and council academy. So following that, we have our first regular meeting on the 28th. And then the very next week, what we've been doing is canceling that February 4th meeting because that next Friday and Saturday, we have the workshop. And so that's what's being proposed, so that we wouldn't have a regular meeting, a regular meeting, and then two days later, the two-day workshop.
And I'm not saying that we won't, but I, I am saying that I would like for us to keep that as a regular scheduled, and then from where we go, then I think we could, you know, even if there's something, a lighter workshop that we need to do, or that we would have that opportunity to do it. Same with the following year in 2027.
Okay.
Okay, now I've, I've got some comments about that, but I want to finish questions first, go to public comment, we'll come back for council discussion to have further discussion about, about the topic. So are there any other, any other questions, councilmember Martinez-Beltran?
Just that and then the 26th workshop.
Very good. Any other questions by council? There being none, we'll open public comment. Any comments on this item?
No, mayor.
There being none, we'll cancel the public comment and come back for council discussion. My concern on that item, especially around the February 4th, is, I think, just as what Christina mentioned, we have a January 28th, which, again, a lot of work putting these together, then you have, we have the February, the, what is it? 6, 7, 5, 6, whatever the date is for the.
4.
6, 7.
Yeah, 6, 7, 6, 7, 6, 7. Whatever, either where our, where our workshop is located, I mean, our, our goal strategy.
They got it, they got it.
You guys got it immediately.
God, that's all here.
Yeah, the strategy, the strategy is Friday, Saturday, and then, that's a lot of, I think it's a lot of prep. I, here's what I would, I would rather say, we say, hey, if we need it, we'll put it on, but if we put it on now and we decide to cancel it, we take a lot of heat from a few people in the, in the community saying, oh, you're canceling meetings. I think if what we say here is, we, let's, let's not, let's not set the February 4th as a meeting date, but if we need it, we will certainly add it, is, is where I would, I would go with that. Otherwise, it's a lot of pressure, I think, to have three intensive meetings in a row within a matter of days.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if we're going to have, you know, a, a workshop, we all already have those times, and so with schedules and work and everything else, it's just easier to.
Yeah, I'm open to what, whatever the council was thinking on that.
So, so just for me, it is more difficult, because this is two weekdays that I would have to probably miss out on work, and that is more difficult for me. So I would rather just keep that Friday, Saturday. But I understand what she's saying, to maybe keep it open. So I like the idea of not having it be an official meeting, that if we cancel it, like the mayor suggested, that some people might misread that or misinterpret it. So how, how would we have it open? But it is tougher for me, because I have to, and way in advance, we're taking time off.
We would just, we wouldn't, we would leave the schedule as is, that currently it's canceled, but should we feel the need, we'd say, hey, we're just, we're going to go ahead and, and meet.
So I don't have to find a new time with everybody and.
Right, right.
Um, councilmember, may I, may I ask?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Um, so we send calendar invites. I'm wondering if it might be helpful if the calendar invite remains on everybody's calendar as a hold. The meeting schedule could stay as it is, because from a staff planning perspective, too.
Yeah.
So if, if, I don't know if that would help kind of bridge the gap?
Yeah, I think that's great, just so if we are having something, again, we don't have to corral and try and.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
So I would still do a calendar hold as if there were a meeting, and then as we get closer, we can drop it if we don't need one?
Appreciate that, yeah.
Okay.
And then, councilmember, you talked about, I think, August 26th, there was a.
Yeah, that will be for '06, and then you also have that the same for '07.
I'll do the same for which year.
I'm sure we'll look at it again next year, but that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. The 26th is when we have a workshop, and it's in the evening, and I'm just wanting us to give that some proper time rather than, I mean, we tried that this year, and we ended up coming back and doing workshops, so I think we should probably.
So what you're, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you were saying. So you want to, you want to hold the 26, August 26th as a workshop?
No, the 26th, we have, is currently, it's usually a council meeting.
Yep.
It's on a Wednesday evening.
Yep.
And so what I'm saying is, we've scheduled the mid-year workshop on a council meeting, whereas we usually have a proper workshop. And this year, we tried that, but we ended up coming back.
I see what you're saying.
Doing a proper workshop, so I think we should give, we should have a workshop.
Got it, that makes sense, I hear what you're saying, okay. Yeah, so instead of, so what we would, the 26th, if I'm hearing right, would do a regular council meeting, but then we would schedule a workshop somewhere within that period of time.
Right.
For, for the mid-year check-in, is that?
And you're thinking an all-day workshop, councilmember? Is that what you mean by a proper workshop?
Well, I mean, I think that's what we've had in the past, so I think we, we'll, we're probably going to have some things that we're going to be looking at this year. I don't know, but I definitely want to make sure that if it's something we have to dig into, that we have the time to do it.
And so maybe doing that, is your thought, maybe on a Saturday? Doing it all day?
Yeah, Friday or Saturday, we usually do Friday, and then if we need to go, we go into Saturday.
I think what we would need to do, in order to be careful of the end of schedules, is that if we do a Friday workshop, we should do that, we should do that on a week where there's not a council meeting, and then the next two days.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
We want to.
Yeah, another option is, we just schedule the meeting to start earlier, like, say, 1 o'clock.
Oh, on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, we could, how's that sound? An eight-hour meeting would be great, on a Wednesday.
I mean, I think.
That's an option.
Yeah, a part of it is, we also heard from the public comment that people were asking to have it on a different day.
Yeah.
So that was one of the things that. So, I mean, this is in August, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Next month.
Yeah.
But I do think that we ended up going to the workshop, so I'm just thinking that that's probably something that we should do, and I schedule, especially in summer, you know, my stuff.
Could we do this, is, would, would you guys be open to this? That we approve the schedule as is, with, then, we're going to say to staff, can you pick, can you recommend a date somewhere between August and end of September where we, we set up an all-day or some period of time for a workshop?
Yeah.
Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion then to approve?
No, second.
We've got a motion by councilmember Vega, a second by councilmember Martinez-Beltran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? There being none, that passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you for that discussion. Uh, then we'll move to item 14, monthly budget. All right. The numbers guy. And, and real quickly, that, and we're getting close to the 7 o'clock hour. Are we allowed to give them four, because we're going to get right into the heart of his, his presentation. Can we give them those four extra minutes and let the students go a few minutes early?
As, as long as they're willing to report back that they learned more than just about a chicken dish and six.
Yes, yes, butter chicken. Butter chicken was the di, the dish. Yeah, so why don't we, do we, why don't we take five minutes here and let the students have, you know, do you need to sign? Michelle, do you need to sign? Okay, so let's take five minutes, allow them to do their thing, and then we'll come back just a little after 7:00, and hear that. Thank you again.